Okay. Check, check. Test one, two. Check, check. All right, ladies and gentlemen, since we've got a pretty solid agenda here today, we're going to go ahead and get started here right on time. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use requests, and to consider any appeals from any decision of city staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines. They have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers, and they receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to take a moment here. I'll introduce our board members. On the audience's left is Heather Ann Rowe. Next to her is Kuku Sa. Next to him is Marla Jones. On the audience's far right is Tom DeCio. Next to him is Dave Gare, and then Rhonda Sidia. My name is Mel Pins, Chair of the Board. I'll introduce our city staff who will be assisting us today with the procedures in this hearing. The zoning board's legal counsel to my left is Gary Guidelock. I'll introduce our city staff to the audience's left here on the sidebar. Senior city planner is Mr. Frank Dunn Young. Next to him is Bert Droste, Deputy Planning Administrator. We have Catherine Drejas, City Planner, and Chris Halsko, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Also assisting us with audio/video as meeting moderator, just down here right in front of me is Michelle Wall. I'm going to cover the meeting's procedure here. For those that have been here before, yeah, you've probably heard this. For those of you that have not, I'll go through this so you understand what we're going to do today. But keep in mind, I will help you with the hearing process as we go through. But just to give you an idea here, first and foremost, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-judicial board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. The meeting is open to the public. The meeting is also being recorded for both an audio and video legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. If you didn't pick up a copy of the agenda and staff recs, we've got them in the little black trays here just as you came in the door to the left. Feel free to step up and grab a copy when I'm done with my opening remarks. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is our first section of the agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed. Rather, they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendations in the staff report unless there's an individual of this audience or a member of the board that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur before a decision is made. I'll come back to the consent agenda here in just a few minutes. For our regular portion of the agenda, after an item has been announced, city staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal. They'll present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing for that agenda item. Anyone that wishes to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of an appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to provide their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board regarding the item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken in regard to the item, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. Lastly, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments if they so choose. All speakers must speak only from the podium here in the center of the room. We've got the little microphones standing up there. You can adjust that to fit. Before you begin your remarks, you will need to sign. There's a little sign-in sheet just laying there on the desk by the microphone. We just need your name, mailing address, that's it. So before you sign that, again, complete your name, business, or residence as appropriate for your address. In the event, you may need to be contacted for legal notices that are related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to remain courteous, to focus their comments only on those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Please be respectful of time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. After all comments have been received on the agenda item, the board chair will then close any further public comment. The board will immediately deliberate the request. We'll make a decision here today during the hearing on the appeal. Please note that it always takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we ask that you please wait until about at least a week from today's hearing if you would need to contact the city's permit and development center to obtain any necessary building or sign permits that are related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order. That document will be provided to you and the city staff for the record. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the board's decision, or such approval shall expire. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa District Court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. Any material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation is considered part of the permanent record. Therefore, if there's anything you want to present today with pictures, drawings, or documents, you may do so, but you'll need to give copies to city staff for the record. If you would like copies of anything presented today, just ask city staff after the hearing. Just a couple housekeeping items. We'd ask that you avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to limit distractions during the hearing. Good job. Please ensure your cellphone has also been silenced. Also, good job so far. And if you need to use the restroom, you can just exit here, go past the staircase. You don't have to go back downstairs. There's some restrooms just past the staircase on the left. Once the agenda item that you're interested in has been completed, you're welcome to leave the hearing. We'll have a five-minute break in the meeting around 3:00 or so if that might be needed. So again, that's the background on how we'll do the hearing. We'll help each of you through this today, so don't worry about that part. So the first thing we're going to look at is our consent portion of the public hearing. Again, with the consent, staff is recommending approval. Most of the time, there's conditions that go with that approval. So long as the applicant is agreeable to those conditions, staff is recommending approval. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask staff, do we have any changes to the agenda? And I think Frank will help us go through that if there are.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Staff is recommending one change. Staff is recommending item eight be moved to the consent agenda. This pertains to amending a conditional use for an existing bar to expand their patio by 10 square feet. The modification, staff believes, makes the situation better. The applicant has agreed to all conditions, which also include no outdoor sound to be allowed on the patio. And so those are, that is the item that staff has recommended be moved to consent.
Okay. And I'm not going to really ask any detailed questions here, but again, there's already an existing conditional use approved here for a bar. There's already approval for an outdoor patio space. Is it just moving the patio around a little and adding 10 square feet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Would there be anybody in the audience that would be opposed to us looking at approving that request as it was presented? If somebody would be opposed to that, all I would ask is that you raise your hand, and if so, then we'll wait and we'll hear it on the regular portion of the agenda. Would there be anybody that's opposed to adding the issue for, since you moved the page on me there, Frank? Item eight, 435 East Grand Avenue. Anybody in opposition? Seeing no hands, anybody on the board? There's no opposition, would there be a motion to move item eight to the consent agenda? Moved by Marla, seconded by Rhonda. All those in favor to move the consent, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously, seven, zero. All right, so what I'm going to do then is I'm going to read through the consent agenda in its entirety and just make sure we don't have anybody in the audience opposed to anything. Item one is a request for a zoning exception related to some wall signage on a building at 4521 Flewer Drive. Anybody opposed to granting that exception? Seeing no hands. Item two is a request for installation of a projecting sign, also related to some sign area at 317 East Court Avenue. That's item two. Anybody in opposition to that? Seeing none. Item three, zoning exception related to also installation of a projecting sign and some square footage exemptions at 3621 Sixth Avenue. Anybody in opposition to that? Just raise your hand. Seeing none. Then again, item eight, conditional use at 435 and 425 East Grand Avenue, related primarily to reconfiguration of an outdoor patio space. Seeing no hands. Board members, would there be a motion to grant approval of items one, two, three, and eight? Marla? You guys do this on purpose. Marla and Rhonda, first and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Motion carries, seven, zero. See you, Jeff. Okay. So if you are here for items one, two, three, or eight, they have been approved. You will get a copy of the decision and order from this board. Again, should be about a week from now. So if then you want to go down and apply for a sign permit or anything else you'll need for construction permits, you should be good to go. So we'll just take a moment here and let people get readjusted, and then we'll move on to our regular portion of the agenda. Okay. Item number four is a conditional use request at 3199 Dixon Street, and Frank will give us the background.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Item four is located at 3199 Dixon Street. The applicant is 2915 Dixon LLC, who's represented by Russell Shinauer, and the business is to be operated by Char Power LLC, to be represented by Hunter Mandernock. They are proposing conversion of an existing building that's approximately 14,448 square feet. They're proposing to have a biochar production facility, which is identified as fabrication and production intensive use in our zoning ordinance. This would include recycling and upcycling activity involved in the processing and distribution of organic materials. So therefore, they're in front of us for a conditional use for fabrication and production intensive use in an I-2 industrial district. And so I am going to move through a few slides to kind of show the context. They're in yellow or orange, it's hash marks. It's located there on the east side of Dixon Street, north of Hull Avenue and south of East Euclid Avenue. The applicant is proposing to operate the facility 24 hours a day, approximately six days a week. Sundays, it would be closed. Biochar, according to the application, indicates that it's a biological charcoal product that is produced by heating organic materials such as wood, crop residue, manure, organic waste, et cetera, at a very high temperature in a low oxygen environment. And so they state that biochar has significant environmental benefits when applied to soil. It can improve soil fertility, reduce greenhouse gases, emissions from agricultural land, and help sequester carbon. Therefore, overall contributing to climate change mitigation. And so, as you can see here, the building is rectangular in shape. They would have a wood chip conveyor that brings the materials in. They'd have room for processing. They'd have a finished product. And then they would have a conveyor that would, I guess, where you'd load and transport the finished materials. And so here is the applicant's explanation that I quickly went over. And so the expectation is that they would meet all fire building code, all site plan regulations with the use as well. Now, we did send out notices to neighborhood associations. All of them received the agenda. This property doesn't fall within a neighborhood association. Here are just a couple photos. The end of the building, this would probably be more of your north end. There's along the street, kind of facing easterly. This would be more northeasterly. And then this would be facing northeasterly again. So kind of this area is where you, we anticipate that they are going to, according to their site plan, have the conveyors that would bring in the wood chips and have the conveyors to transport, distribute that finished product. And so staff, staff is recommending approval. Staff believes that the, if the applicant operates in accordance with all conditions of approval, that it would be consistent in the spirit of our zoning ordinance. Here are the conditions that we have laid out, and these are quite typical for this And one of the things that we are requiring is the operations, outdoor operations, we would look for screening as a component to screen that portion of it that's outdoors. And as with any conditional use, if at any time the zoning enforcement officers determine that the business is, has become a nuisance or exhibits a pattern of violating any conditions of approval, that they could get back for reconsideration. And so we did send out notices to property owners within 250 feet, and we did receive a comment card back, and they are in support. We didn't receive any neutral of or in opposition to. Here is a comment card from Liberty Ready Mix. And here is a second card. And they did hold a neighborhood meeting. And it looks like there's one community member attendee appears to be the title holder, so no concerns raised at that time. They did indicate that they do plan on doing a bit of outreach for public education for this project and what it'll mean to the greater community at large. We did receive a couple comment cards outside of the 250 feet. Those comment cards also are in support. What questions do you have for me?
Board members, questions for Frank? Frank, could you put the picture back up that showed like the proposed operation, like the load-in, load-out conveyor?
I can do that.
So this looks to be a pretty small site. The stuff on the upper right-hand, the little silver stuff, that's scrap metal associated with alter, not related to this project, correct?
Correct.
Entirely non-related. You have a statement, and here's one of the conditions. "Any outdoor operations or storage shall be screened from adjoining property street right away." What is outdoor storage to you? What would that mean? Could that mean storage of pre-processed material?
It could be. It could be a finished product as well.
So potentially, you'd let them store manure outside? That's one of their incoming items.
That is correct.
Would they have to show that on a site plan if they're proposing outdoor storage?
Yeah, currently, they, we don't have, they aren't showing an outdoor storage component with us.
And perhaps they're not. I'm intrigued and interested in this. As proposed, it looks okay, but we had an operation that in southeast 14th, just north of Maury, almost under the viaduct of southeast 14th, well, just right over here, about 15 years ago, they took in construction and demolition waste to make wonderful products out of it. None of that happened. They just piled stuff up in the building, outside of the building. You had a big fight with state agencies that had permitting. It caught fire. It burned for a week. So I'm just a little concerned that you're allowing outdoor storage, but we don't know what that outdoor storage would be or how it would be managed.
Part of the conditions are that they are to, and I'll scroll to that, they are to submit to us. I'll zoom in real quick. So they are to operate with, in accordance with the supplemental use regulation, so there'd be no odors, gases, noise vibration, pollution, water, soil, lighting, et cetera, as to create a nuisance. And so they would be providing a statement to the Neighborhood Services Director acknowledging what it is that they do there. So let's say they were to store said product out, they would have to address how that would be handled.
Gotcha. And just one other quick one. This is a city zoning conditional use under city regulations, but do you have some fine print somewhere that says, hey, you may need other county, state, or federal permits, and this approval doesn't grant you any rights or authority when other permitting or permission may be required? And maybe that's something we just don't mention, but this operation might generate through its activities some things that might need permitting through the state's environmental agency, Iowa Department of Natural Resources. Is that just something you hope they know or understand on their own? I realize it's not your jurisdiction.
Sure. Part of what they're, what they will need to do is they'll need to submit a site plan, and some of those components may come to play at that time. That isn't something that we've written into. The site plan component is, but we haven't written specifically into how it operates in accordance with state requirements.
Okay, yeah. And that would be across the board, not just for this operation. You know, if somebody wants to operate a cement kiln, they're probably going to need some state environmental permits. But you don't reference that in your staff recommendations then as any other, like, hey, just a reminder, get your other permits that might be needed?
No, no.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Any other questions for Frank besides me? All right. Okay. So, thank you, Frank. So the applicant, I've got up to 10 minutes to present their request for their conditional And just as a reminder, before you begin your remarks, we just need you to sign in there quickly. And then just give us your name, and we'll let you get started.
Good afternoon. Hunter Mandernack, 4125 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. Speaking on behalf of 3199 Dixon Street project. In general, we agree with all the staff recommendations that were included in the report for the conversion of an existing building into a proposed biochar production facility. As Frank mentioned, there are a list of requirements that we will need to meet, including the site plan approval and any building code, fire code approvals, making sure that the operations are in conformance with all those codes. Did want to address one comment that was made regarding outdoor storage. There are no current plans for outdoor storage. We had some initial discussions with city staff, and any outdoor storage is required to be behind the front facade of the building. So that really limits on this site where any outdoor storage can occur. And as such, there, and it would be required to be screened from the right away. So given all those requirements, it's really not feasible to store any outdoor product on site. The little orange boxes you see on there are representing trucks that would be sitting there while they're loading or unloading, so they wouldn't be permanently sitting there just in a short time while they are loading or unloading. And as you did mention too, we will make sure we get any other approvals we need through the sites, site plan process through the state or DNR, any other required entities. Other than that, I don't have anything in addition to the staff recommendation report and are requesting approval.
Great. All right. Any questions for the applicant by the board? Okay. All right. Pretty straight up. Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? If there is, step forward. You've got up to five minutes. Seeing none, is there anybody that wants to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? We just need you to sign in and just give us your name. We just need you to sign in, and just give us your name, your address, and you've got five minutes.
My name is Carol Maher. I live in downtown Des Moines. I'm sorry I was late. I was in a cleaning laundry cooking zen and lost track of time. But the one great thing is, I just saw this public sidewalk addition. Does that mean they're putting in a sidewalk?
Will we keep comments?
They have to? Okay, that would, ooh, love that. But I have other concerns. There was a nebulous sort of environmental impacts regarding violations of odor, gases, things like that. I'm not sure what the definition of that is and who gets to define it. I would think from the applicant's point of view, they would want to know that, as well as residents who today live with a large environmental impact of odor that comes out of the Smithfield rendering plant right over there. And in spite of the city measuring the odor, the odor is still there. So I think, I think we should all know what, how those environmental impacts are going to be measured, and what, and if there's remediation going to happen, or if we're just going to say, oh, they have it. Because nuisance can sometimes be in the eye of the beholder. And also, I'm wondering if anybody knows the process of making biochar? How do you make it? I don't know. Does it require lots of energy? You heat it to extreme temperatures? It seems like it would. Are they using gas, electric, coal? How are they heating it? And is water involved? Is water involved? Because that's a precious resource. I tried to find online before I came here how it was made. I couldn't find that, but I don't know if you're interested or not. I can talk to them afterwards to find out if you're not interested. And finally, does this biochar work? In other words, when you put it on the fields, it's supposed to be so much better than manure, which is sprayed on fields, which I would agree, because anything would be better what happens today, when it leaches into drain tile, into stream and creeks, and then creates the 51st state down in the Gulf of Mexico. Does this product, when it goes on agricultural fields, leach drain tile, creeks, streams into our drinking water? I'm sure you're going to say, that's not up to us. We don't care. But gosh, I think we should care, right? Because clean drinking water is hot topic in this area. So I think we should care about if this product, how this product works, and if it will be harmful either in its production or in its use to us as residents of Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Any other comments in opposition? You see how this works? Just need you to sign in, then just give us your name and address verbally, and you've got up to five minutes.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity. Not your fault, but due to the fact that our business is owned, I'm Steve Kramer, sorry, representing Channel Prime Alliance. We are at 1803 Hall Avenue. So we are just south of this location. And just because it was mailed to our corporate office in Orlando, I just found out yesterday afternoon, so I am coming fairly unprepared. But I have a couple of questions. I'm glad to see that there's going to be a large concern about odorous gases and pollution in the air and of the ground. That's one of our concerns. Obviously, the air pollution, as it impacts us, and then also, you know, ground, as it might come down to us, and anybody in the nearby. I had a couple of other questions. I don't know if we're considered in the adjoining business. The fact that we were invited here makes me think that maybe we are, even though we're across Hall Avenue from, so we're at the, underneath that picture, just that building there with the white roof is the old EP True, currently the Royal Flooring, and we're across the street to the south of that, so I'm not sure if we're considered adjoining. If we're not considered adjoining, do we have any stake in a complaint? I guess that's my concern.
Well, that's the reason your company was invited. You're not adjoining, but you're in the radius.
Yes, thank you. So, so I'm not sure that I'm against it. I'm glad that people are recycling, and I think that's wonderful. I hope it works, in reference to the first lady that spoke. I'm glad that the city, state, and DNR approvals will be given, but just, I'm not sure what the input is. If the input is wood chips, that's probably not going to smell until it's burning. I'm not sure what the smell is then. If it's something like manure or something that comes out of the Smithfield, obviously, we're an industrial area, not a residential area, so again, this stuff's got to happen somewhere, but hopefully not in our neighborhood. But we are, you know, we would be mostly concerned about any air pollution and how that might impact our business, our employees. And then, my final note is that Dixon Street is, and Hall are backed up, when the soybean prices change, at our good neighbor ADM. And so, there will be trucks lined up on that Dixon, backed up quite a ways, almost maybe back to Euclid at times. And it doesn't seem like this is going to be a heavy traffic area, but I'm assuming trucks can pull in and back into the dock to unload, as opposed to doing a three-point turn on Dixon Street, which might create havoc. So that's just some of my questions, not knowing, you know, I don't know if there's been any questions asked about what is the material that's going to be recycled, and how that might impact the air and the ground quality around us, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you for coming in today on such short notice. Appreciate that. Any other comments in opposition? Anybody want to comment kind of neutrality, any related items? All right. Seeing none, do we have any further questions for city staff? For city staff, anything you want to say? I see zoning code compliance on his shirt. I think I know who he is.
Chair members of the board, zoning enforcement officer Chris Helskow. Just wanted to reassure the audience here that while we are not scientists and environmental impact advocates, we would have the ability to be the conduit for complaints for neighbors. If there's odor, noise, something else that becomes a nuisance, it can come back before the board, or we can partner with our partners at the county, or state, or other agencies within the city. So that is a remedy here in this case. I don't know if maybe the applicant wants to talk a little bit more about that, or maybe have the opportunity to explain how they control some of those things currently might be beneficial. But we are, zoning enforcement is able to initiate and handle complaints.
Thank you for the information and clarification, Chris. Much appreciated. Okay. So applicant, you can have a final three minutes here for closing, kind of like the last rebuttal here. And if you didn't speak earlier, just need you to sign in again. We'll just need your name, address, and your remarks.
Excellent. Well, I'm Bernie Del Campo. I'm the president of ARDI, and we manufacture the equipment. So I'm going to address some of the concerns from Carol. Thank you for those. This is a new technology that we have been developing for more than 10 years. And I'm going to take a little bit of time to explain the process. I think it's useful for everyone. So first, how it works is a shipping container, and inside, there's a chamber that is a combustor, and there's an ogre that moves the wood chips. And just to clarify, this facility is meant for wood chips, and we know the problems of wood chips all around the city, so we're trying to find a use for them, and we had a pretty good one. So the wood chips going out in that ogre, they produce paralysis gases. We combust them there. That heats up the same pipe, and then you carbonize the product. That's how we do it. And the product comes out on the other side, and we cool it down, and then we add water. Do we use water? Yes, a little bit. We put 30% of moisture. This machine would be producing a couple tons a day, some rough numbers, 20 tons of biomass coming in, will produce five tons of biochar, more or less. And then you would use roughly one ton of water, so 250 gallons, somewhere on there, per day. Going back to the questions, and by the way, I'm going to be here. If anyone has more questions, can address me here. On the orders, well, there's a combustor, that's where you burn the paralysis gases, and then it continues to go to an RTO. We call it afterburner. But it's basically a big chamber that you control the combustion well. We designed it so it can stay one, one second and a half at 800 degrees Celsius. So that smoke, when you make a fire, that's what you're burning, and you're making sure it combusts well. So you don't have soot, or you don't have smell of barbecue. All those are controlled in the afterburner. So if running well, that's, you shouldn't see anything coming out besides heat. What else? Yeah, we're not intending to use manure, wood chips. And we make a carbon that is pretty much an activated carbon, so you could be, you could eat it. This carbon absorbs a lot of things. We use it for filtration. The Brita filters have activated carbon, and you filter a lot of stuff in the water. And there's some project associated with this that hopefully they develop, because we do filtration of wastewater, pond water, all sorts of waters. We actually work with the Des Moines Water Works and send some of our samples to remove smell, odor from water, from drinking water. But again, it's not innocuous, but it's a carbon for filtration. You can turn it into a carbon for filtration, and it's not so complicated. So, yeah, again, it's not rocket science, but we have a control combustion, and we make carbon from wood chips or many other feedstocks, but here, we're going to be working with wood chips. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. So we'll close the public portion of the hearing and go to board deliberations. Any initial thoughts? Who's heard of pyrolysis before? From the boards, there are a lot of good comments here today, and I always do try to remind people, yes, we all care, we all think, but what we bring to this process and sitting behind this bench here is only related to our authority and our decision-making within the city zoning ordinance. So some of the questions about accumulation of materials outside, or congestion, noise, and, and within reason, you know, undue odor. What do we know about that now? Well, if somebody's just got a pile of manure there, yeah, they could have undue odor. But as far as other environmental concerns, where it's placed, leaching into the environment, those are some things that there are other agencies that have purviews over. If they have not already, they will need to be discussing this with Polk County's Air Quality Bureau, that carries out federal regulations, and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, both waste incoming, biodigesters, anaerobic digesters, and I think a pyrolytic unit that could fall under some requirements for permitting at the state level as well. My main concern would revolve around those things within the zoning ordinance related to use of the site. So I just ask staff, as well as the applicant, keep an eye on that. I don't want to have another southeast 14th viaduct issue, for those of us that remember that. But based on that, you know, whether business works or not, hey, that's, that's not our job. Good luck. If it's not economically viable, then it's not going to be continuing. So, but as far as, you know, business models, and will it work, and, you know, where are they going to sell all this? That's not really our purview here. It's really no different if somebody wants to open up a tavern. Will it work or not? I just don't want it to cause any undue impact in the neighborhood. Whether they make money or not, that's up to them to figure out. So generally speaking, I'm supportive in the concept, which from what I'm seeing, as staff presented, we're not, this is pretty low impact for materials coming and going. If it would be anything different, I would encourage staff to work closely on that. So I'm open to any other comments here. Anybody else have any other thoughts?
My first thought is, it is going to be something that our enforcement officer will have to stay close to.
Sure.
And his words gave me comfort. But all of the concerns that were expressed are excellent ones.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Good comment.
But again, to what you said, we have to work within what we are charged to work on, and I think it's been covered.
Yep. Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for approval of the requested conditional use for fabrication production intensive in an I-2 district, subject to the conditions as presented. Would there be a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marlis. All those in favor? All right. Seeing all, motion carries 7-0. Again, just give us about a week for our part, but yeah, you'll need to talk to some other agencies as well. Some of them may say you don't need a permit if you don't do this or that. Some may say, yes, you're going to need a permit. And some of those permits do require more than a 30-day application period. So, thank you. Wish you well. Okay. That brings us then to item number five. And it looks like Catherine's going to give us some background at 3800 Sixth Avenue.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines. As mentioned, item five is located at 3800 Sixth Avenue. This is at the corner of Douglas Avenue and Sixth Avenue on the north side of Des Moines. The appellant is looking to add sale of wine and/or beer to an existing limited retail sales business. It is in a multi-tenant business, so the conditional use, if granted, would be limited to the 600-square-foot tenant bay that they are applying for. As, as always, a limited retail sales business expanding to include sales of wine, beer, and/or tobacco products are limited to 40% of their retail sales from those products. Again, this is located in Douglas, along Douglas and Sixth Avenue, just south would be the intersection of, about a block, block or, yeah, block, south would be the intersection of Euclid Avenue and Sixth Avenue. This is an area undergoing revitalization, known as Oak Park and Highland Park neighborhood. Few photos showing the area around parking is located on the west side of Sixth Avenue and the north side of Douglas Avenue for off-street, or, excuse me, on-street parking. And then additionally, there is off-street parking on the west side of this building. The appellant provided us with an interior site plan showing where they would be adding shelving for the products, the liquor, or, excuse me, the wine and beer and tobacco. And they stated that this would be approximately 10 square feet of area, floor area, within their interior space. They also provided us with a narrative stating that their current hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday, so each day of the week, and they do not intend to change those hours. And I can come back to that narrative if anyone has any questions. Staff is recommending approval of the request with pretty much our typical conditions. So again, that would limit the limited retail sales to 40% of gross receipts from wine, beer, and/or tobacco, and to the 600 square feet of their tenant bay. Again, our pretty typical conditions of what we recommend in this case. And should this conditional use or this business become determined to be a nuisance, this can be brought back to the board by the zoning enforcement officer after requesting a report of findings. We did get a copy of the police report for the property. So generally, this also includes, when it's a multi-tenant bay, the entire property. We did not see anything... We did not see anything of consequence in terms that would be related to the sales of wine, or beer, or tobacco. And we can look more closely at that if anyone has any questions. They did provide us with a summary of their neighborhood meeting. They said they did not receive any attendance to their meeting that they held. And then, here's a copy of what they sent out. Copy of the consent map. As you can see, we received a few cards. In addition to the cards we received, we also received some emails. So, combination, I'll leave this up for a minute so you can read that. And then we also received a handful of emails, I'll zoom in on this. And another email. Additionally, we received an email just before the meeting began, so we don't have a physical copy of it to show to you. The email did not have a signature or an address, but stated that they were in opposition to this request. If you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to give a stab at answering those.
I just have one quick one. Would it be appropriate to list the hours that they've agreed to?
So in terms of the hours, we did not write a specific condition for that, but we are generally fine with the hours listed, and other limited retail businesses have had extended hours beyond what they're proposing, so. This is also, I'll note that this is also in a neighborhood node, I forgot to mention that earlier. So this is in an area that we would consider small neighborhood businesses of this nature to be an excellent place to be located.
So they've proposed operating hours, or stated what their operating hours are in some of their documents here?
Yes.
Can you pull that back up?
Yeah.
Till 10.
Okay. Since they have stated that that is their intent, is it possible for us to make that a condition?
If the applicant's in agreement with that, I wouldn't have a problem with putting that as a condition.
Keep that in mind. So Catherine, you mentioned the neighborhood node. In essence, they have a right by zoning to already have a general retail grocery store by that zoning district, as it is, right?
Correct. This is an existing building, and it is zoned to allow a limited retail sales business, which would also allow, with the approval of a conditional use, the sales for wine and beer.
Got it.
And they meet our separation distances for this type of conditional use as well.
So while you have that up there, appreciate that. I just wanna, I went to public school, so I need to check my math here on some stuff, but they say the total square footage of the store is approximately 600, 600 square feet. They only want 10 square feet designated for alcohol and tobacco products.
I believe for shelving, yes. So 10 square feet of floor area, obviously with shelving.
Well, there's a difference between linear feet of shelving to me, and there's a difference between square feet, but more importantly, your item two, you state that the retail sales limited, you selling wine or beer shall be limited to a maximum 600 square feet of area.
So we don't define where they would have to locate their products within the tenant bay, they get to choose that, and they are self-identifying as having 10 square feet of floor area.
So they could fill the, they could fill 590 square feet of the store with beer and wine, but it's still better add up to less than 40% of their sales?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
They could fill the whole store with wine and beer, but...
I'm just thinking of years past where we basically said, hey, yeah, you gotta keep it under 40%, but you're limited to, you know, 10 or 20 linear feet of shelf space, or if a shelf is 10 foot long, it's no more than 3 foot deep, well, that's 30 square feet. I don't wanna be, you know, getting nitpicky here, but it kinda looks like, well, the way this is written, they could use all, almost all, or they could use all the 600 square feet of area to sell alcohol, but it would still have to be under 40% of their overall sales.
The conditional use would be limited to the 600-square-foot bay within the addressed building.
Okay, okay, 'cause that's what you're getting at, is it's, okay, it's the bay of the building at the address is the 600 square feet.
Correct.
Okay, all right. And what they're getting at is within our bay of our 600, we just want to sell it right here.
That's what they're identifying as, yes.
All right, I don't want to split hairs, but I just, yeah, it just didn't quite add up for me. And my public school is great, by the way. Okay, anybody else have any other questions for staff? All right, well, let's hear from the applicant or their representative, however you guys want to do this. You've got up to 10 minutes. We just need you to write your names, address down, and then give us your name and address verbally, and then tell us what you want to do.
Hi, my name is Maria Campos, I work with Olfa, she's the owner of the business. That's the first time that she have a grocery store, she usually have a taco truck. So she just got that store like a few months ago, we just got the premises around January. And she just pretend sell some wine, tobacco for Hispanic people, these are most people that have come to that store. They have another store near us, they have, it's like a small restaurant, like a fruit, like a Michoacana, something like that, snacks. And she don't pretend sell more than 40% of the, her revenue. And, yeah, she tried to do everything allowed, we just, she tried to take care, her customer to don't park. They have to park in the right spot, they have parking behind the store. And, yeah, it's just 600, because it's a small store, and we just pretend use like a cooler, like a small cooler, just behind the groceries. It's more a snack, like a grocery, it's more like a small thing from Guatemala, she's from Guatemala, and she just pretend bring some like Guatemala stuff for the Guatemala people from here. And just small things, that's them. We just don't pretend sell more like, oh, have drunk people around us, 'cause she just work by herself, and the other lady, I'm pretty sure that she don't want to drunk people around here. So, and we just apply, 'cause our neighbor front of us, they have the permits for sell wine and tobacco, that's why we don't see any more problems. So, I don't know.
Okay, so Maria, would you be okay to answer a few questions if we have some?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have questions.
Any questions for Maria? So Maria, your client, you said she just started the grocery store recent, or the retail store recently?
Yes.
Just a few months ago?
Yeah.
What was in that bay or that location before?
It's a grocery store from different person.
So it has been some kind of grocery store for a very long time then?
Yeah.
Maybe a number of years?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And with what you're adding now, you're not planning, which this, wouldn't allow for this, but no liquor, which would be like vodka, whiskey, none of that?
Yeah.
Just like beer and wine?
Just beer and wine.
Okay. And, you know, you may need to work with some state licenses, or the distributors that wholesale that?
Yeah.
All right. Again, that's all outside of us, but, okay. Any other questions for Maria? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant? Seeing none, anybody, just some neutral comments about the proposal? Okay, seeing none, any questions for city staff? Anything city needs to add? Seeing none, well, let's just go ahead and close the public portion, then go to board deliberation.
I would like to add a condition to reflect the hours that they've agreed to.
That they've stated they would be operating.
That they've stated, and that they were not going to change.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion for approval of the conditional use with that additional?
Thank you for saying those words, yes.
And is that clear enough for the record, if that's a motion and an extra condition that the hours would be limited between, was it 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
10:00.
And that's up seven days a week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Would there be a second from anyone for that? Ronda? Okay, teamwork. Okay, so, we've got a motion and a second to approve the conditional use for the retail sales limited, to just sell wine or beer for off-premise consumption as proposed, subject to the conditions presented by staff, and adding an additional item that those retail sales shall be only between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., up to seven days a week. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries seven zero. All right, good luck with the business.
Yeah.
You bet. Have a good afternoon. And again, give us about a week, and we'll get you that document with the approval. Okay, so, that'll bring us then to item number six, which is a conditional use request for an assembly/entertainment use at 2923 Southwest 9th, and Catherine's gonna give us the background here.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drejas, planner for the city of Des Moines. As mentioned, this is an item located at 2923 Southwest 9th Street. Many people may recall this as being a former McDonald's drive-through restaurant. The appellant is before us today, asking for a conditional use for assembly and entertainment small, and this would be in an RX-1 district. So this is zoned appropriately to allow this business, but it does need the conditional use before it can move forward. It is generally located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Virginia Avenue and Southwest 9th Avenue. It has been vacant for a little while, and that's why you do see boarded-up precautions on it. They did provide us with a narrative explaining what they intend to do, this would be available by reservation. The entire building would be rehabbed, according to the appellant, and then they're primarily looking to host weddings, King Sierras, baby showers, birthday parties, business gatherings, other meetings, so that means they are proposing hours Monday through Sunday, so all days of the week, from 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m., with events concluding by midnight, allowing one hour for cleaning. They did provide us with a site sketch showing how they would be amending the existing parking, they would like to add parking through the second lane of the former drive-through, and that would increase their parking onsite. They do still have to go through the site plan process if the conditional use is approved and they decide to move forward. I will state that the appellant is not looking to have a conditional use to allow the sales of any alcoholic liquor, wine, or beer, however, they are proposing that guests who reserve the space could bring in wine or beer, but it would be for service, not sales, and the appellant has stated that if any of their guests choose to do this option, they would require that they provide security for their event. So, and I'll mention, since I forgot to last time, that this is quite adjacent to a neighborhood node. It's not quite within our nebulous boundaries of a neighborhood node, but it is adjacent to that area, and so again, this is generally a good location for this type of event, even though it is in a residential area. And staff recognizes that, so we are recommending approval of the request, but we have a number of conditions as part of that. Now, these are pretty much our standard conditions, however, I will note that condition one would limit the hours of operation from 8, that should be 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., with any associated cleanup ceasing by midnight. And this is something we have done with other small entertainment and assembly venues that are adjacent to neighborhood districts, as we have limited others to these specific hours. The rest of our conditions are standard conditions, again, pointing out that the zoning enforcement officer can bring this item back to the Board of Adjustment, should it be deemed a nuisance, or not in compliant, or violating the conditions. For the, it'll be the upper one, for police calls, we checked, and there were no police calls for service to this address. The appellant's did provide a summary of their neighborhood meeting. They said they had two attendants, both of whom live within the 250-foot radius of the notification that we require. And then we have our consent map, and you can see we had a number of various responses come back in, and I believe we also had a few emails, so I'll go through those. This card was both from the appellant for another business that's in the area, but not within the 250-square-foot, or, excuse me, 250-foot radius.
Can you show us, when you're through with that, where 800 Creston is? I see somebody was concerned about parking.
Oh, sure, yep. I will go back to one of the maps. This card had both comments on the front and the back, so you'll see that in a second. And then you asked me to go back to the map.
Yeah, I saw some addresses for Pleasant View, Creston.
So Pleasant View Drive.
Okay.
There's a handful that would be addressed that were within the neighborhood, or the notification area.
Yeah, and I see Creston to the north.
Yeah.
Can you go back to their neighborhood meeting letter?
Sure.
Because the concerns that were given, then they had some responses to those. They talked about parking? Utilize a nearby uplift building?
I believe that's the other business owned by the appellant, that, again, isn't within the 250...
Can you show where that is?
2729.
On the area map or the parcel map? Where would that be? So, right, yeah, the little skinny one, is that it? Or where are we at? Yeah, can you hover the cursor where you think that address is? Is that it?
I think it would be down below its, or north.
So it's, it's further away, it's off the map, basically. It's north? Okay. I'll ask the applicant.
It would be the, it would be north of the building, so it would be up here.
I'll ask the applicant. And to the best of your knowledge, I know we don't necessarily have, you know, the parking requirements in the new zoning ordinance the way we used to, and sometimes I need a reminder on that, are they required to provide a certain amount of parking for this onsite?
We would have parking requirements, I'm afraid, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what they are. If the, the appellant's mentioned that they would like to get their conditional use... If the, the, the appellant's mentioned that they would like to get their conditional use before they move forward, and that's typically how we recommend, but following, if this is approved, following, the appellant could submit, would need to submit a site plan, and it would go through that review, and the parking would be discussed and determined at that time.
Okay. That would be a concern for me. I see in their proposal, oh, we'll just park people in the drive-through. Well, you can't, you can't do stacked parking and get that approved in your site plan, right? All parking has to have accessibility for vehicle maneuvering in and out of the space individually, is that correct?
It's one per six occupancy.
It's what?
I apologize. Bert has informed me that it, for the RX1 district, it would be a one per six occupancy, and I don't know what the occupancy load would be.
And again, yeah, we'd have to get into the math, but generally speaking, parking spots have to be maneuverable, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so, so somebody can't just dash a map and go, yeah, I'm just going to park, going to park here.
And that's what they provided us with the site sketch and indicated, that they'll, they'll determine that through the site plan process.
And to the best of your knowledge, there's no parking along Southwest 9th?
To the best of my knowledge.
There's no street parking available on Southwest 9th?
There is.
Okay, as if there is, they're going to get rear-ended, I'll tell you that. And for the side streets like Broad and Virginia, I would guess maybe parking on one side or the other at the most?
Guessing from the aerial map, it looks like it's on the north side of Broad Street and the south side of Virginia Avenue.
Okay. All right.
I have a question, and it may be for the enforcement officer, but how, how do you even know when they're bringing in their own bottles for them to follow up that there was security provided? I mean, is that just?
I might allow Chris to respond to that, but I believe that would just be part of the business model and determined by the ownership.
Yes, zoning enforcement officer again, they can apply for, a vendor can come in and supply alcohol for a wedding, and they would apply for a liquor license, just for that.
If a vendor came in?
Yes.
But if just the participants would bring their own bottle?
Yeah. That would be a little more difficult for us.
Okay.
Again, it would probably be associated with a complaint that was generated maybe in the neighborhood.
Okay.
So, what if I just want to go to the keg stand and buy a keg and bring it? Can I do that in what we would be considering here?
I believe so. I don't think I've run into that yet, but.
Yeah, but they'd have to have security.
Yeah, be kind of BYOB scenario.
Right, that's, yeah, okay, but that falls within the allowance here then? Yeah, okay. I mean, I'd been asked to do that before.
Did you, security?
I was just bad with the tapper, and I'm like, I ain't doing this again. Other questions for Catherine? And again, we'll have the applicant, they, they should be able to tell us a little more about what they'd like to do. Anything else for Catherine? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant, you've seen how the process works today, we just need you to sign in, sir, and then if you'll just give us your name and address when you speak, you got up to 10 minutes.
Hello, my name's Martin Castañeda, my address is 310 East Rose Avenue. We're here seeking approval for the event venue. Heritage venue, that would be the name of the venue, approved, will be a family-oriented gathering place that reflects our shared values and uplifts Southwest 9th community. By transforming an underused property previously being vandalized, we bring, we aim to bring new life to the area. Our mission is to create a welcoming space for weddings, quinceañeras, professional events, cultural celebrations, and community gatherings. A within a safe, respectful, and well-managed environment, our goal is to be an asset to the neighborhood. Community considerations, we understand this change is going to bring concerns, we are committed, operating responsibly, and addressing those concerns through the following measures. Sound management, possibly amplified music. Use soundproof materials during the renovation to minimize the noise, that could be windows, roof, drywall, flooring, and such. Private events only, all events will be invitation-only, it's not going to be open to the general public. Hours of operation, eight to midnight, okay, yeah, so the noise would be off by midnight, and they have an hour to clean, so by 1:00 a.m. it would have to be cleaned and closed and secured. Parking, that was one of the main things, it was brought up on the neighborhood meeting. Parking, we also own 2720 Southwest 9th, which is an uplift building, a real estate building, right, which is about 450 feet away from the building, heading towards, that would be north, a couple properties away from Lincoln High School. That would reduce the street congestion, right, and that's, I really think we have enough parking based on the communication that I had with our architect, right? We already have enough parking, but if we needed to overflow, we can use our other building. Let's see, alcohol and security. Alcohol, they can take their own alcohol, it has to be cans only, no, no glass bottles, right? There's no hard liquor that would be served there, and if they do decide to serve alcohol there, they need to have a security guard or a police officer. All events should be regulated for people to follow these measures by a strong contract and a significant deposit. Yeah, this, this building was vacant for a lot of years, one of the main reasons was because McDonald's had a deed restriction on the right, drive-through and restaurants, so there cannot be any restaurants or drive-throughs in there, so that makes it very difficult for people to come in and invest that type of money into the building and the renovation of the building. When it comes to the drive-through, right, we plan to convert that into a parking space, there's two lanes there, right? Obviously, one of the lanes that would park, the other one is to maneuver around, and one of the lanes wouldn't be blocked, so it's only a one-way going around the drive-through, and I think that's the best, you know, that we can use a parking spot for. Altogether, if you want to know about the parking spots, the 2923, the McDonald's building, it's a total of about 59 parking spots. If we were to turn that drive-through into a parking, also, the overflow parking, if we use 2720 Southwest 9th, would bring another additional 30 parking spots, making a total of 89 parking spots. Based on what the six for, for every parking spot, six guests, we anticipate that our maximum capacity will be about 500 people. However, we would lower that to give us a cushion, right, so we don't run into problems regarding the parking.
Thank you. We have questions for the applicant? Anyone? I'm just going to jump in here since I just heard you say, what? Oh, Tom, sorry. Go ahead.
Fire lane. You're going to, what if they make you use one of those lanes around the building as a fire lane? For?
I mean, that would be part of the site plan, right? We're willing to work with the site plan, however, that's probably about $15,000 that we're not willing to, you know, spend to get a site plan right now. I wanted to make sure that we get the approval and everything would be, you know, within the site plan and engineer in the city of Des Moines, right?
What about insurance?
Insurance?
If you're going to be allowed for alcohol on the premises?
That's, that's going to be part of the whole, you know, business plan, right? No matter what, we, we are the owners of the building, we want to protect our asset, right? Once again, from what, the building itself is going to be covered as an event center, right? We already talked to our insurance agent, we are looking into people that rent the place, lease the place, have their own insurance, right, and somehow, we're looking to add it into the price, not really give them an option, right? Let's say, for example, it's a $20,000, right? We are going to put aside $300 of that for them to have their own insurance also, on protection.
Thank you.
Other questions? So, sir, do you have any experience with running an event center or similar business model?
We owned up the street, we do own uplift realty, right? We have a property, we do flips technically, rental properties, we deal customer service day-to-day, right, business. That's, to me, it's, I mean, just running the place, right? We have experience, not your main question regarding event venue?
Yes, that was my question.
Regarding business altogether, we do, yes.
Okay. And related to where uplift is located, what, 2700 Southwest 9th, 2720?
2720, which I measured on the Polk County Assessors, it was about 450, 451 feet away from the building.
And as related to that, for some of us longtime South Siders, that's the former Pizano's Pizza?
So, we are neighbors to it, as the former Sterns Finance.
Sterns Finance Building, okay, I got you. But yeah, so that's on the west side of Southwest 9th, you're located on the east side. I don't recall that there's any pedestrian crossing, stoplights, or anything between your off-site proposed parking.
There's not, there's not.
People have to walk down to Virginia to the stoplight and then cross there, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. And you mentioned you thought about up to 500 people is what you?
No, no, that's what the engineer had, had said, right?
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, we're probably going to keep that at like 400, 450 to give us a cushion, right?
And how many parking spots do you have available on the property?
On the property, so right now is 41 parking spots, regular.
So, that'd be about 10 people per car then?
Mm-hmm, you're correct, yes, and then the drive-through, if doable, that's another 18 people, 18 parking spots, I'm sorry, and the uplift building has another 30 parking spots out there.
And I understand, yes, a true site plan, they're expensive, but you mentioned you're already working with an architect?
That's correct, yes, someone that we have used in the past, right, that he's willing to work with us without really paying him or lump sum of money, so yes.
Sometimes I've seen applicants come to us where they'll say, this is not an official site plan, but at least to scale, we have shown the parking spots so that we can see how they do fit within the city's requirements, within reason. You don't have anything quite like that yet, do you?
No, I don't. Part of, I mean, if you go to Polk County Assessors, you can see the parking's already accessed there, with that too, they, we're being required to close the entrance of Southwest 9th also, so that's going to reduce the, the traffic there, which is actually a good thing, right? Since we have owned the building, when we bought the building, there was homeless living there, right? So, if anything, we have, you know, already made positive impact on the neighborhood, right? Even up the street, right, that building, it needed a lot of work, so I just kept driving through it, and I was like, until I actually got a hold of McDonald's Corporation, we came to an agreement, I was like, well, at the end of the day, it's a business, right? So, I have to look at it that way, and the main thing why people wouldn't buy that place is it was because of the deed restriction that has, drive-throughs and restaurants, can't be reopened there.
So, is the, and I don't want to get too far into this, like I said earlier, our board is limited to certain things, but is the deed restriction that no restaurant can go in there?
That's, that's correct, no restaurants.
No restaurant of any type?
Nope, or drive-through.
Okay, let's, let's forget about the drive-through for a moment. No restaurant could go in there?
Yeah, food service, the only thing that I was able to include there was some type of like multicultural food to be, you know, served, and that's it. They wouldn't really, yeah, they, they, they just don't want any, any type of competition within.
And they took all the kitchen, did they take all the kitchen stuff out and the grease trap and everything?
The grease trap's still there. I took all the restaurant stuff out already.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, and there's a grease trap there, it's nice if it, that's an asset, right?
Yeah, but it kind of defeats the purpose when you can't have a restaurant.
Right, right, that seems, yeah. Yeah, that's a tough one, I get it. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir, we'll check back in a few minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Come on up, since you've signed in, Carol, just, just give us your name again verbally.
Carol Maher, downtown Des Moines. Closing a curb cut, I had to say yay, and raise that up, thank you very much, always in for that, and I would encourage, whenever parking becomes this boogeyman, to put in a lot of bike racks and encourage the use of DART, because there are many ways to get around the community that you don't have to get in the car. So, we should encourage that. And also, the neighborhood I used to live in, in Chicago, Albany Park, had a very big Mexican contingency, so quinceañeras and celebrations that support Mexican culture are very dear to my heart, so it's exciting to hear that there would be a cultural center like this for Mexicans that live in Des Moines. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else to speak in support? Okay, anybody to speak in opposition? Anybody speak in neutrality? Okay, seeing none, any further questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none. Staff, you don't have anything to add? Okay, all right, well, I think we can just close public, or close public comment, go to board deliberation then. Any initial thoughts? Most of you know where this is, just by default.
Hmm? Yeah, I probably drive by here six, eight times a week. I've been disappointed, it's been sitting here for a long time. I was really disappointed, it was getting vandalized, I was pleased to see somebody kind of boarding it up, I guess that was you, but even better than that, I'd like to see it get reused. I'm not opposed to the use itself, I do have concerns about the amount of people who will be present, and there are some requirements for parking, percentage ratio. I cannot consider parking 400 to almost 500 feet away across a very, very busy street where events are going to be in the evening, after dark, and yeah, we're just going to rely on this parking just because I own it, it's a number of lots away. It's not an adjacent lot, we've had a lot of proposals where they have adjacent parking, maybe there's a place of worship, you know, and, and they don't care if it's on a weekend night, that's fine. They will have to rely on a lot of street parking in a neighborhood area with single-family homes, and I know that street parking is allowed by, right, if it's marked, you can't say who parks there, but the parking you'd normally have in a residential neighborhood is probably going to be residence, it's probably not going to be related to a business. I'm just very concerned that there's not enough information here for me to understand what the impact will be on the neighborhood. I just don't have enough. So, I would be in favor of continuing this to next month, and maybe they're going to have to spend a little time and money to figure out how many parking spaces, or have city staff better understand to and with them, how many parking spaces does the city want? I don't have those numbers, that's just me, I'm just one of seven, but those are my concerns.
Chair, I, I don't know that you can continue the hearing since you've closed it, I think that might, yeah, I think that might be a problem.
Okay, that's fine, don't worry about it.
Continuing it.
Yeah. That's fine, not a big deal, but I guess, as one board member, as it is, I don't have enough information to feel confident that based on congestion in the neighborhood, I could vote for this.
Who determines the occupancy of the building? Who determines how many they can have in there? It's not parking places.
Right, and we probably should ask staff that, but the Des Moines Fire Department, I believe, does that.
So, they may want to have 450, but they might not be able to get 450.
Gary?
Yeah, we have a building and fire code that would set those occupancies.
So, his comments about how many people he thinks that could hold may or may not be accurate.
Correct. It would be, it would have to be in compliance with, with all of our city codes, including our fire code.
And Gary, if we can lean on you, there's something called a pre-op, where folks can sit down with city staff and different departments and go over projects, but even in pre-op, they don't have to have a full site plan ready, do they?
Not generally, but at, at that time, and to Mr. Gair's concerns, you know, officials from. from other city departments, including building and fire officials, would be a part of that process, and they would submit their comments that they would require for approval.
Yeah.
So, so is it, would it be appropriate for us not to deny this, but say, you need to get some more facts before we can vote on this?
I think, I, I think because you've closed the public hearing, I don't think that you can gain, gather any additional facts.
No, can we ask them to do that, rather than we vote to deny it?
Can they ask for continuance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to open, in essence, we'd be opening up the public.
I mean, we don't want to deny it, and then they can't come back for a year if there's some additional information that would help, right?
Yeah. This is kind of a self-imposed restriction, right? I mean, like, the way, like, we have, we have the process in place that we establish, there's notification requirements that go along with that and everything, which obviously that would have to be re-noticed. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow the applicant and any and all interested parties to present their case and to answer any questions about any additional information that's needed.
Yep.
I hate to be hyper-technical on something that is essentially.
Oh, that's your job.
I mean, it's essentially a self-imposed restraint. So I, I understand where we're coming from, I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason why we couldn't reopen the public hearing, I mean, and I would invite my colleagues to correct me if they think that I'm really misguided on that, but I think if we were gonna do that, we should just reopen it and allow any additional, you know, questions to be asked in that, in that manner. So if that's what the, the board would like, I would, I would recommend a motion to reopen that and a vote on that.
And, and again, those are just my concerns, Dave had a good point of, well, who decides the occupancy? I'm not trying to upset the whole apple cart here, but.
I do have a couple of thoughts.
Yeah, jump in, Cuckoo.
So someone who's gone through city processes, there is enough in the process to mitigate any kind of personal concerns that we have, as far as parking is concerned, as far as the site plan review, it's going to be caught, and I don't think we should be catching it here, especially as a business owner who has purchased a derelict property and working on converting into something that generates income, I think just allowing for that process to go through, knowing that if there are significant concerns around parking, if there are significant concerns around capacity, the mechanisms are in place to address those concerns.
Yeah. Okay, yep, I got you.
That was part recommendations too, wasn't it? For number 10, it has to go through acceptable building and fire code, so.
Yeah.
I think it'd be caught too, I like.
How do they mitigate on-street parking when nobody controls that? I mean, it's first come, first served, right?
Yep.
The way it's mitigated is by having an understanding of the number of people who are going to be using the building and the parking capacity associated with that estimated number of people. All right, so if it was 500 people, the assumption is the, the process will determine the amount of parking that is needed, and if they can't meet those parking requirements, then there's a hurdle in your business plan.
Yeah, but we've approved meeting places before that there could be 500 people, and it was on-street parking, the neighborhood was here, and we just wanted everyone to understand that we need to be good neighbors and let's not block people's driveways, but if I want to block, if I want to park five blocks away and walk on the street, because that's the closest spot, no one can stop me.
This is correct.
Right?
Right.
So I get the parking lot and the number of spots.
Yep.
Now, I don't, I'd be shocked if they could, if we have 10 per car.
Well, certainly.
We're zooming the capacity, right? We're zooming the allowable capacity, they haven't been through the site plan process, they haven't been through the full process, so they are not aware of the limitations yet, where I think it will be unfortunate on the board's behalf to artificially impose those restrictions when there, there is a final process that they will go through.
Yeah, I don't want to put any restrictions on them, I'm just gonna say, if we deny this, okay, because we've closed public portion and we're following Robert's Rules of Order and all this other stuff, then they have, they have a year that they can't do anything, versus if they sat down with the city and said, okay, here's what we want to try to accomplish, can we do this? And help me get to a point where I can come back in front of this board and have some assurances that I'm, what I'm saying is accurate and that I can do what I want to do if they're willing to grant me that. I'm, because I think one of Mel's biggest concerns is this on-street parking.
And my concern with the on-street parking is the time period it would be occurring, the late night when people would then be leaving. People go to a party, it means you're having a good time, a whole bunch of people were getting in their cars in front of your house. With on-street parking, yes, we can't say you or you can't park here if it's a legal parking space, but most on-street parking in a residential area is primarily residents, or an occasional visitor to a resident. By default, with the number of people they want to have here and the number of spots that would be available, however you want to compute it, yeah, we're not gonna have 10 people showing up in a car carpooling, they're gonna park everywhere they can around here. Congestion, generally speaking, character of the neighborhood, quality of life of the area, this sits between two residential streets, Broad and Virginia, they're not through streets, they're just local neighborhood streets. I never drive on Virginia Broad unless I go see somebody that lives down on Southwest 6th.
Unless you went to Lincoln.
Unless you went to Lincoln, of course. I'm just one person, but these are just, these are some concerns I have, and if somebody buys a property and then asks questions, I always give them the reminder, you can come ask for conditional uses, you can check with city, you can have a pre-op, you don't have to own the property. I think a lot of times that goes a long way to, because too many people, they jump first and ask a question later, and sometimes, a lot of the time, it's helpful, hey, here's my idea, let's get this vetted out first, because now, yeah, he's invested. So I don't want to belabor this unduly, those were my concerns, if there's some positive stuff here, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I want to, I want to say, what's, what's gonna harm if we approve it and it doesn't make it through?
Good point.
With the fire or with the capacity, then it has to be lowered, less congestion, less cars.
Yeah, I'll call it the Dave scenario, for lack of a better term, we give them the conditional use.
And let them.
And they cause problems after you've invested all this money, and people are partying down, and there's garbage everywhere and noise at midnight, the zoning enforcement officer can drag you back in here and will take that permit away. So it's kind of like if you get a driver's license, you abuse it, it gets taken away. I don't like to see that happen, I don't like to do that, so it's kind of like, I, I think when we've approved conditional uses, the responsibility is on you then to do what you say you're gonna do and, and make it where, yes, it's a fun place to be, but it doesn't cause undue issues in the neighborhood. I just don't feel that with what I'm seeing here, again, this is not 6th and Euclid, this is not 25th and University where there's a lot of hubbub, this is quiet in this entire neighborhood after 10:00 PM at night. This is a, that's the thing about Southwest 9th that's funny, yeah, it's an arterial street, but half, half of it's residential, but these are all residential bordering directly here and directly where people are gonna have to maneuver and try to find a parking spot. So, just my concern, put something on the table.
And addressing or talking through, through that concern, I think you made a reference to Euclid.
Mm-hmm.
I do think as far as zoning is concerned, the similarity in zoning, I think the city staff referenced it was adjacent to a node or a part of a node, so there are multiple similarities there. I believe the board voted on an event space in, off of 6th and Euclid, and I think the parking for that space was. Yes, it wasn't, it wasn't, so just encouraging consistency in how we navigate these requests.
But Southwest 9th itself has zero parking on it, that's, that's, that's just one of my concerns, I'm just, this is at the bottom of a hill, there's a million things that go with it, it's a, it's a great property, but I'm looking for the right use, and I just wish Mc, you know, again, this has nothing to do with us, but if McDonald's wants to keep paying property taxes with all these restrictions, that place could have been opened as a restaurant, a non-competing type of restaurant, very soon after it closed the first time. But that's, that's not our decision or our concern. So I'd suggest let's move along, if somebody'd like to make a motion.
I just want to point out that staff did recommend changing the hours.
Oh, yeah. Till 11 o'clock at night instead of 12.
Yep. The applicant had a chance to address that, because they should have seen that, we had a chance to discuss it with them, but if you guys want to make a motion with staff rec, that, that may lessen, you know, from my little personal opinion, the impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah, because I don't think it's gonna be as many people as what they're thinking, I think it's gonna be a smaller, capacity-wise.
Yep.
So I would motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Okay, we've got a motion by Rhonda for approval of the request of conditional use for Assembly Entertainment, subject to the 11 listed conditions as presented by staff, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Cuckoo. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. One, two, three, four, five. Those opposed? Two, okay. So, good job, you've got it, in a week you'll get a copy of that decision in order, these will be the requirements for you to operate, and again, it will be a conditional use, so you, you, you don't want to have Chris come down and visit you, so I wish you well with your business.
Take a picture and hang it on the wall.
He'll wear that shirt. Okay, we have one other item on the agenda for this afternoon, item seven is a conditional use request at 3711 Ingersoll Avenue, and Frank's gonna give us the background here.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board, Frank Dunn, city planning staff. Item seven is located at 3711 Ingersoll Avenue. The property is, the title holder of the property is Ingersoll Theater LLC, represented by Connor Delaney, also the business owner. They are proposing, or business operator, they are, they are proposing use of an existing 5,900 square foot building for an event center use with sales of alcoholic liquor, wine and beer for on-premises consumption. An event center use is allowed in the MX2 mixed-use district, subject to being granted a conditional use for another use selling alcoholic liquor, wine and beer. So let me restate that, event center is allowed in the district, it is the selling of the alcoholic liquor, wine and beer that brings them in front of us today. So for, for those of you that are familiar, this is the, the home of the iconic dinner theater site in Etay Day, you drive down Ingersoll and you'd see the big flashy sign that's out front. The building has been closed up for quite some time, so the, the current owner is looking to reoccupy and modernize the space. You know, it is just over 5,200 square feet in area. The hours that they are proposing would be 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, five to six days of the week. They're looking to have a seating capacity of approximately 220 people, and so the, the way it is, is it will have a stage, it will be split in two floors, there'll be a bar on each floor. And so they intend to have different types of activities, music, theater, comedy, et cetera. They do intend to incorporate a fine dining experience as, as part of it, so it, it's the gambit of the event space food, along with the service of alcoholic liquor, wine and beer. And so in the image, you see the property here, and as you can see, it's, it's a, it's a tight spot. They are looking at leasing 27 parking stalls from the property to the west, as well as they would have a couple stalls available out front. And I am going to, here's the, kind of their seating arrangement, stage, seating. Let's see, kitchen is that kind of little annex area that was in the image there to the east, northeastern corner of the property. And here is another image, just kind of showing, with an aerial underneath. And I've got a few photos that I took just the other day, beautiful weather out, so jumped out, took some pictures, this is, this will be facing west. And this would be facing alongside of the building, on the west side of the building, facing what would be northwest, or northeast. Did get a shot, that would be more, more to the direction of east, and so as you can see, you know, the site is in need of repair. The applicant is proposing to revitalize it to its historic iconic appearance that it, that it once had. There's a look facing directly north. And so staff did, we did send out notices to the North of Grant Neighborhood Association, we, we didn't receive anything specific, those went out on April 8th. We did have a few folks that came and, that sent in, and they, they were uncertain as to whether or not they were in support. Staff is supportive of their request. Staff believes that approving it would be in accordance with the zoning ordinance. We have a set of conditions that are, are quite typical for event center use, particularly with alcohol. There's eight of them that are here, laid out. Now, as any conditional use, at any such time, the property becomes a nuisance or exhibits a pattern of violating any conditions of approval, the zoning enforcement officer can bring it back to the board for reconsideration. And so that is the consent map, you see the two property owners there and there that were unsure. This individual was asking about the parking requirements for the use as well. Once again, they are proposing the 27 parking stalls to be leased from the neighboring property. This is, parking is, is an item that would be generally handled through the site plan review process, which they are required to go through to re-establish use for the dinner theater experience. uh, use for the, uh, dinner theater experience. Another undecided. And then, um, so the applicant did hold a, uh, neighborhood meeting. And, uh, two neighbors showed up, um, and once again, they, they didn't, uh, bring up any, uh, concerns or, uh, any items to be changed. What questions do you have for me?
Questions? Cuckoo?
The question is, what's the process of determining capacity and parking requirements as you develop a property within Des Moines?
Okay, uh, sure. So, um, project like this comes through, they go for a pre-application meeting. And that is where they learn about what each of those requirements are, from building code, fire code, to, um, the zoning ordinance and the planning and design ordinance. And that's how they come to us in terms of Board of Adjustment, uh, for the conditional use. When it comes to parking, it's stated, okay, you have a parking situation, um, where you're required to have one parking stall per six seats. They are then, uh, uh, they then have to decide, okay, under these circumstances, how will I handle that? And when they submit a site plan for satisfying our planning and design ordinance, they have to demonstrate how they are going to do that. If, um, if they are not able to achieve what is required, uh, or they are not within a limit that city staff as part of the site plan review process could approve, um, they would go on to Planning and Zoning Commission where they would, uh, staff would make a recommendation and then the Planning and Zoning Commission would ultimately make a decision.
Good question. To drill down on that a little further, the event center, or if I want to even call it an assembly use here, this district does allow that by right, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's not the use of the facility to have a dinner theater, if you will, or whatever we want to call it. The appeal here is to allow them to sell alcoholic liquor, wine or beer.
That is correct.
That's the only reason they're here.
That, that is correct. And if they, yeah, it, yes, that is why.
So within our purview, the only thing we're here, if they do get allowed to sell alcoholic liquor, wine or beer for on-premise, will that have a negative impact on the neighborhood? Generally.
Uh-huh.
Those are some of the, that's probably the main, main thing I'd worry about. Any other questions for Frank? Marlaus, did you have one?
Well, I was going to talk about the parking too, um, because you had said that it was a capacity of 220.
Mm-hmm.
And even if it was one parking stall for six seats.
I'm sorry, I'm not picking you up over.
Oh, they, uh, you know, you had said that the capacity was 220.
Uh-huh.
And even if it would be six seats per parking lot, I mean, they would still need 37 spaces.
Uh-huh.
And they are only getting 27, I believe. And I don't know what the parking is along the street, how busy that is. But that's kind of questionable right away, but of course, back to Mel's point, I guess that's not our concern.
Uh-huh.
And what they're asking for. Correct? It's not our concern.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, and also, do you have anything, do you know anything about what hours they're planning to operate?
Yes, uh, so they are looking to operate five to six days a week from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Did, did you want to add something?
Oh, I was just, you, you looked over here, um, kind of for confirmation of your question. And so I was just going to kind of expand, expand a little bit on, you know, as Mel asked and Frank pointed out, they have the, this use as a, as, by right, right now. So that, the, the number of people, the number of parking spaces, those sorts of things, those are already covered by what they can do by right. So as Mel pointed out, and again, just to kind of, um, make sure the board is considering the appropriate factors, this is really the only whether selling alcoholic liquor, wine and beer is appropriate in this space.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Frank? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. If you're good, Frank, I think we're good for the moment.
Okay.
Um, I think the appellant's here. It's been patient for a long time. Some people say best for last, but we just need you to sign in and we need your...
All right, thank you very much.
We need your, uh, just state your name and address. And you got up to 10 minutes to tell us about your project.
Thank you.
Or tell us about your request, I should say.
Uh, okay, Ingersoll Theater, the footprint is currently about 5,200 square...
And you are, sir.
Oh, sorry. Connor, Connor Delaney, one of the co-owners of the Ingersoll Theater at 3711, uh...
Thank you.
Ingersoll, yes. Um, currently, the footprint is approximately 5,200 square feet. The city did graciously allow us a new plat of survey when we purchased the property in July of 2022. Um, we tore off the kitchen that was not up to code on the northeast side of the property that you'll see there. Our plan is to add a new modern kitchen in that location, approximately 800 square feet. So, um, after acquisition, um, went in, uh, needed a new roof immediately, holes in the roof, had been in, um, terrible disarray for probably a 20-year period of time. Been vacant since 2014. Um, I'll, I'll go ramble, but, um, 1939, built as a movie theater by A.H. Blank. One of the original owners was a Jake Bassman. It was a movie theater until like the mid 1970s. A gentleman named Chuck Carnes came in and started running it as a, kind of an institution, as a dinner theater from 1979 through 2004. Well-loved establishment, um, you know, a very community-centric, um, he was beloved and sorely missed since 2004. Handful of other uses, nightclub, couple of different restaurant concepts that did not, did not work. Um, so again, as I said, acquisition, put a new roof on it, got it all demoed, environmental, remediated out of the space. We've worked with a, um, architect, real competent group, Sequel Architecture, over the last three years to design the space, um, to specifications that honor what it used to be. Our plan is to keep a significant portion of the current marquee intact. We're going to add LCD screens in the front on that marquee, also LCD screens where you see the original billboards in the front, the 1, 2, 3, 4, that are there in the front. We've gotten our state tax credit approved, federal tax credit approved, worked closely with the city for the whole of that three-year period of time. Um, fortunate enough that a very high-quality operator came to the table about a year ago or so. Um, gentleman named Steve Peters and his family, wife Randy Peters and children, are now partners in the ownership of the building itself. And then the plan is to have a company that he created 30 years ago called Venue Works, um, come in as the operator. So, he currently has, uh, 300 full-time employees, 3,000 affiliates, very competent, thoughtful local gentleman, based out of, uh, based out of Ames, Iowa. Um, has a, uh, dinner theater in Chanhassen, Minnesota, a sub, a sub, uh, suburb of Minneapolis. Um, it's been thriving for approximately a 20-year period of time. High-quality food and beverage, um, high-quality drinks. Um, uh, yes. So, um, you know, to address the parking, um, we do have the perpetual parking easement that we have, and it may be incorrect, but upon acquisition of the building, we did have the, oh, prior owners give us a perpetual parking easement for 40 parking stalls there to the northwest that are at the back of that, of that bank. And then we do own a handful of other properties within a block of that location that'll offer us a, a number more. So, um, we certainly did, um, take that into consideration early on in the process of getting it acquired. Um, we are trying to remain flexible on the amount of alcohol and food that we serve in the space. I will say that Chanhassen Theater, that is going to be very comparable, just three times the size in Chanhassen, that particular theater, they are serving more food than they are beverage out of that establishment. We're, uh, planning on having the same kind of shows in this space as they do at the Chanhassen Theater. Chanhassen is more live theater. We plan on having some in this space, you know, tribute bands, comedy shows, but, you know, with this, with this gentleman and this team at Venue Works, we really expect it to be an institution once more and pay homage to what it was that Chuck Carnes created that was so well-loved between 1979 and 2004. Um, gentleman next door at the Greenwood Lounge, that's an institution as well. Bartender's Handshake People, a block away to the east, they do a, a wonderful, wonderful job. Um, we think that the, the ambiance of the building is going to generate something that's, uh, that's pretty, pretty well-loved and fits well with what the neighborhood certainly, or, um, currently has established. So, yeah.
So, you willing to take some questions?
Yes, please.
Questions for Connor? From anybody? So Connor, if I was to come do a show, I'm kind of thinking you'd be maybe something like what Hoyt Sherman Place does, or, I, I know they strictly do just, you know, live theater performances at the, um, at the Playhouse, but...
Yeah.
They sell wine and beer, and I don't know if they sell mixed drinks or not, but you're, you're looking at the same idea here, right?
Yes, very close.
Okay, you're not planning to have like just a bar for bar hours, or if there's not a show, just to have a bar open?
No, we are not.
Okay.
Yes.
So if you're selling the alcohol, there's going to be some kind of performance occurring with it?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, we, we'd like, um, I mean, as he stated, 11 o'clock to 11 o'clock. Uh, our primary shows are planning on being from 5 o'clock to 10 o'clock in the PM. Um, you would be purchasing a ticket and the option for food online, maybe $50 for a ticket, approximately $50 for food. You come in, you sit down, you order, you eat, you have about an hour and a half seated, um, talking amongst yourself, and then the show would, show would start and run for, run for two or three hours.
Okay.
Right? You get your food, you get your drinks, you sit down, you enjoy a show.
And you reviewed the staff recommendation, there's like eight items there?
Correct.
You're okay with complying with all of those eight conditions?
We're happy to comply.
Okay. I like that answer.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Connor? Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I see we've got a lot of people here, so we'll see what others think.
Yes, sirs.
Okay. Uh, anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Anybody wishes to speak in neutrality about the applicant's request? All right, seeing none, unless this, we have further questions for the city? Nope? Okay. All right, and I don't think the city has anything further to add, so we'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation. Any thoughts? I just hope he doesn't do "Dead men don't wear plaid." I just remember that for years as a kid, being on the marquee. It seemed like they had that every, like every year, they had that little "Dead men don't wear plaid" performance. Never knew what it was about. Don't know if anybody's seen it off-broadway.
I was going to say if we get out a condition that any, uh, city attorneys who are also theater musicians would have to be hired, um, by that, but I think we probably shouldn't do that.
Yeah, it'd be a conflict of interest. But yeah, and, and, and again, within the MX2 mixed district, this use is allowed, uh, you know, obviously, this was a theater. It was a dinner theater. This use, this is what it was built for. But the issue here is, yeah, you'd like to sell alcoholic liquor, wine or beer. So I don't know, anybody's got concerns one way or the other? If so, say such.
I'll make a motion for approval.
All right. Heather's got a motion for approval. Second, subject to staff recommendations for clarification. Okay. All right, so we got a motion and a second for staff recommendation to issue the conditional use, sell the alcoholic liquor, wine, beer. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, motion carries 7-0. Thanks for waiting, Connor. Keep up the good work there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, board members, we have just two items of business here. Um, the one is, if you were here last month, uh, minutes of the meeting, um, if anybody has any changes, so say. If there are none, would there be a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a motion.
Rhonda?
Second.
Marlaus? All those in favor who were here, say aye.
Aye.
Last month. That's five, five of us, or six of us, five of us, six of us? Okay, six of us. Cuckoo was missing last month? Yep. Okay, so minutes carry. So, our other point of business, each year, we elect two officers, uh, a chair and a vice chair. The chair's job is to meet with city staff as necessary, uh, prior to the hearing for finalizing the agenda, uh, obviously, carry out the process for the hearing during the hearing, uh, all the procedural part, getting everybody's involvement and input. And then the chair then coordinates with staff after to get the decision and orders finalized, signed and recorded. Uh, the vice chair is the other board position, if you will, and the vice chair would do the same in the absence of the chair. So if the chair's gone for a month, then the vice chair would sign the decision and orders and review those things. So, would there be, and it's just those two, would there be any nominations for chair? Tom, you got your hand up.
I nominate Mr. Harris.
Okay, would there be a second? Okay, nomination of second, nomination by Tom, second by Marlaus. Um, it always takes four votes to pass, so, anybody, and I'm not going to vote for myself. Anybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You guys are too nice. Okay. All right, so that motion carries 6-0. So then we have vice chair. Uh, Dave is our current vice chair. Would there be, uh, a nom, the, and the floor is open, any nominations for vice chair? Tom?
Mr. Gere.
All right, would there be a second?
I have a second.
All right, second by Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Motion carries 6-0. Dave, uh, Dave abstained from voting for himself as well. I have heard in some small towns in Iowa, when the mayor didn't vote for himself, they lost. Yeah, by, by one vote. So, um, it's a privilege to serve and work with all of you, and we will continue to do so. I thank you for your dedication, each and every one of you, and we look forward to seeing you next month. This hearing is adjourned.